Okay, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marcella Holmes and I have a daughter that attended Ravenswood Elementary.
Could you speak up a little bit, ma'am? It's a little difficult to hear you. Can you speak into the mic a little bit more, please?
I said, "Good afternoon, everyone." And I'm a parent that had a child that attended Ravenswood Elementary School. She was only there for two years, her seventh grade year. She was bullied by some girls. And the principal got upset because we had went to her network and went over her head. So she began to retaliate towards all of the girls' parents that had complained. And she told us that if our children fought, they were going to go to jail. So in regards to my daughter never having a criminal record, I wasn't going to have her arrested for fighting, okay? That was resolved by having -- we had a meeting that really didn't take care of the situation with Ms. Bennetts, which was her supervisor. But then we resolved it in the meeting with the parents ourselves. My daughter was an eighth grade student this year, where the principal and the staff totally retaliated towards her by every means and every chance they got. She asked for some referrals from the principal and a few teachers. The teachers gave her the referral. The principal told her that because of me going over her head and contacting the board and safety and security, that she wasn't going to hold her responsible for that, but she will do it. So I told her, you know, "If you felt that way, you don't have to worry about it." So from that point on, the retaliation got stronger and stronger. They started giving her detentions. The girls that was bullying her last year, one of them never got a detention or suspension, any of that. I had police reports. I took them to the school. The school knew that the girls was bullying her. It was done mainly in front of them, and they was never suspended, but one, because she attacked us in front of the police. So the police arrested her.
Ms. Holmes, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
In concluding, my daughter receives a suspension this year because a little boy had attacked her. So due to the fact that she had defended herself back, she got an in-school suspension two days before she graduated. And that's something that's never been on her record for fighting or any of that. They gave her a level four, four or six for defending herself, because the little boy had hit her first. And he's known as a trouble student.
Ms. Holmes, would you speak with Michelle Hurley, the lady over there? She will help you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then is going to be Speaker number 39, Tim Meagan, followed by Speaker number 40, Jose Jimenez, followed by Speaker 41, Latrice Jamison, and then Speaker 42, please, Elizabeth Copper. Tim Meagan, last call. Moving on to Jose Jimenez, last call. Next speaker, last call, Latrice Johnson. Last call for Elizabeth Copper, please. Moving on to the next speaker will be Speaker 44, Mel Rothenberg, followed by Speaker 45, Jim Charlton, 46, Gabriela Isaline, 49, Amina Mohammed, and then 50, Hannah Hayes, please.
Hello. My name is Mel Rothenberg. I'm a professor emeritus at the University of Chicago, and I'm here speaking for the Chicago Political Economy Group. The anger and dissatisfaction that was palpable, that was exhibited here a few minutes ago, reflects a true crisis of confidence in the Board of Education and the Chicago Public School System by many of the citizens here. And I'm asking the Board to take this very seriously, because this is not something that's going to be settled at these kind of meetings, but it's going to be settled in a much more unpleasant way unless the Board takes into account the level of dissatisfaction, distress represented here. The CPS proposed 2013-14 budget was presented in the unusual form of a letter to each public school principal presenting them with a mandatory budget limit involving serious cuts for many schools for the coming year. It is impossible, given this form of presentation, to make an adequate analysis of the budget when the logic and the detail and the coherence are simply hidden in this way. I'm going to speak shortly for the rest of my time about the funding question, because I'm an economist and that's what my expertise is. It has been clear to any intelligent observer that over the last few years, Chicago public schools have faced a funding shortfall. A responsible school board would have aggressively sought out new sources of reliable and stable funding.
Mr. Rothenberg, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
There are such funding sources of funding available. As we and TIF have advocated, a tax on financial transactions would yield great funds. Furthermore, assault on the TIF funds, a demand by the school board to get a fair share of TIF funds for the school system would also result in serious financial relief.
Thank you, Mr. Rothenberg. Our next speaker, please, is Jim Charlton. Last call for Jim Charlton. Moving on to Speaker 46, please, Gabriela Isaline.
Hi. I just wanted to continue with what that previous speaker was saying. But I'm not sure why I still come to these Board of Ed meetings. They are so outrageous and frankly humiliating, really. People speak and voice really rational concerns. They ask questions on the budget, basic questions on our funding, and there's really no straight answer. We get rehearsed lines about tough decisions and then a bunch of malarkey about rebuilding trust. I know a couple of years ago, I walked across the street with some other teachers. We forced a meeting with Patricia at the Bank of America. You heard another speaker a couple of months ago do the same thing. If I can do it with no clout, with no access to this level of power in the city, why can't you? Why can't you reach out to the banks and do something? It's dumbfounding. It's disingenuous. The TIF scandals and we're protesting and getting arrested and calling attention. Why don't you actually flex your political will? Call on your friend, your mayor, and ask him to funnel back money back into the Chicago Public Schools. I don't want a straight answer. It's not a wash. I don't know how you guys bamboozle your way out of straight answers. It's really unbelievable. And mad that we're losing a million dollars. We're already pretty thinly staffed. We have cut our reading specialist and reading programs for our most struggling readers. We have limited security positions, support staff. We're not running the strategies and frameworks like you talk about.
Ms. Isaline, excuse me.
Gladly, I would gladly.
Ms. Isaline, can you please conclude?
Gladly. But we're running triage. So it's a matter of coming to work every day and going above and beyond in every capacity, security in the halls, just a ton of stuff. Anyway, some straight answers on what you guys plan to do with funding would be awesome.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Last call for Amina Mohammed. Moving on to Speaker 50, please, Hannah Hayes, followed by Speaker 51, Jeff Carova, and then Speaker 52, Wendy Pearson, Speaker 53, Nelson Sosa, please.
My name is Hannah Hayes. My son attends Whitney Young High School. I have several Whitney Young High School students with me. They came down here today because they want to have a voice in their education. I am also here as a member of Hyde Park Community Area Residents Empowering Schools. HP Cares works with eight schools in the Hyde Park-Kenwood community. One of these schools, Kanter Middle School, is being phased out. Our community worked hard to save Kanter. We met with all of our elected officials. We met with several of you. We presented alternative plans. We proposed trade-offs, but all our ideas fell on deaf ears. Even while the public hearings were being held, transition teams were in our schools wreaking havoc. Now we have a new chaos upon us, and schools are facing millions of dollars in budget cuts. And we thought that closing schools would save money. And I read every day that CPS says that these cuts will not affect the classroom. This brings me to last month's meeting. I just wanted to reflect on some of the comments that I heard from board members. Some of the board members questioned whether parents really understood the economics behind board policies. So I have to ask, do you really believe these cuts will not impact the classroom? Because if you do, I have to question your grasp of economics. Do you not feel the responsibility to find out whether they really impact the classroom? I also heard we didn't present alternative plans, which is patently untrue. Another board member wondered where all these parents were until now. Well, I can tell you where we were. We've been in the schools. We've been raising money. We've been helping in the classroom. All of your comments really hit home about how truly far removed this board is from the people you represent. You're supposed to support and you're supposed to protect.
Ms. Hayes, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I'll finish.
Thank you.
But I do have a dream that someday I will thank you. Because I will thank you because we've all been working diligently in our schools, and you've really brought us together citywide to fight for our children. I have no doubt that your actions will lead to a great change, a new mayor, a new school board, new representatives in a lot of wards and a lot of districts, because we know that every Chicago public school is our school. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Jeff Carova, and I'm here as a representative for the Friends of Darwin Elementary. Darwin Elementary is our local public school. It's a magnet. My daughter attended pre-K this year, and we're looking forward to sending her there again. She learned how to write. She's learning how to read, speak Spanish. It's really an excellent school. Two years ago, a group of parents and I banded together to form the Friends of Darwin in order to help the school and advocate for it. Since then, we've gone out and we've raised funds. We've increased awareness of the school. We've attended farmer's markets. We've done many activities to help the school. And I'm here to tell you today or express how frustrating it is and how difficult it's become to advocate to parents in the neighborhood that they send their children to a Chicago public school. As I see it, it's extremely difficult for me to continue to advocate unless we have three things: stability, transparency, and advocacy. It's hard for me to advocate for a parent to send their child to Chicago Public Schools if they don't know what's going to happen to the programs they're expecting to send their children to the next year. It's hard for me to advocate parents send their children to a Chicago public school when the formulas or reasons given for certain decisions aren't transparent, don't make sense, and in many cases are counter to information that has been expressed in the media. And it's difficult for me to advocate for parents to send their child to a public school if you're not advocating for the children of public school.
Mr. Carova?
It makes no sense.
Mr. Carova, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
It makes no sense that in a city is willing to spend $55 million on a private education facility, that my school, Darwin, is losing $700,000. That's a loss of a librarian, the world language program for which the school is known. And I would like to continue to advocate for Chicago Public Schools. I am a graduate, but I need to see these three things.
Thank you, Mr. Carova.
Stability, transparency, and advocacy, please.
Our next speaker, please. Wendy Pearson, followed by Nelson Sosa, and then Speaker 54, Sharice McDaniel, followed by Alfred Rogers, and then Speaker 56, please, Oyola Adinca.
Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Pearson. As this non-elected school board continues to play God with the lives of our children by closing schools and cutting budgets, as the mayor passes the buck on to the legislators, and I quote, saying, "Small problems become big problems. Our children, schools, teachers, and communities suffers." What the mayor seemed to think was a small problem has always been a big problem. When two elephants fight, the grass gets trampled on. In this case, the grass happens to be our children. Principals being forced to close or to choose between keeping teachers and educating children isn't small. 855 CPS staffers and closing and turnaround schools isn't small. Losing music, art, gym, and other enrichment programs isn't small. The extra one hour and 15 minutes as the mayor and Ms. Bennetts touted as education to be used for academic and education enrichment is just another cruel joke, because music, art, gym, and other enrichment programs are fundamental learning tools that are lost and in what all of you seem to think is small. In parting, my great-grandmother would have said, "An educated fool is the worst fool of them all." That fool has no people skills, no street sense, no common sense, no sense at all. Renegotiate with the Bank of America.
Ms. Pearson, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I'll be done in a second, ma'am.
Thank you.
Renegotiate with the Bank of America. Save education and education value that all of our children richly deserve. Ms. Zopp answered a question. The question she asked is, "What about the underserved 15,000 students on the west side of Chicago in the Austin area and in Roseland?" Ms. Zopp, I'll answer your question. As a matter of fact, I'll answer the question for all of you board members. You knew they were underserved when you chose to shut down their schools. You knew that they were underserved when you cut the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
You knew the answers. You don't live in our communities. You don't walk our streets. You're not a part of our safety.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 53, Nelson Sosa.
Good afternoon, Ms. Bennetts. I heard you on the radio the other day saying that community groups have never talked to you about toxic swaps. You know, it's funny, because two months ago, I came here and I said, "Mr. Ridala, you're a banker. You know about toxic swaps. Let's do something about it. Let's stop saying that we care about children when we're taking their teachers, their schools, their programs, and giving their money to bankers." I used to wonder, why is it that we have bankers and billionaires running the Board of Education? And now I know why. I know why, because I'll tell you a story. In John Bennett Elementary in Pilsen, you know, we lost $535,000. That's going to mean six teachers. That's going to mean 25% of their budget, and that's going to mean that the classroom may go from 20 to 30 kids. That's what the administrator is saying. Then we can tell you about, you know, Pilsen Academy, another $400,000. Pitters, $120,000. We're not sure about the other schools, because you don't have the transparency. You don't have the guts to tell people what you're doing with their money. So you have to lie about it. So I'm here with the lady who came before. Why do I get up this morning? Why do I come here? Why do I talk to you? Why do we do these things? And I think that the last thing we have is try to, like, shed the veil out of this travesty, out of this bunch of lies that we hear in and out every day. When people ask, "How is the rich get richer and the poor get poorer?" I'll tell you how. By you taking money from poor kids in their neighborhoods and giving it to the bankers that make the base of the mayor of this city. That's why we don't have any money. I want to ask you, Mr. Ridala, when are we going to sit down to talk about negotiating these deals? When are we going to have a meeting? You offer meetings about all kinds of things. We solve these problems.
Mr. Sosa.
Yeah, I'm finishing. I'm asking a question. When can we sit down and go to Bank of America? Go to Jim Reynolds and say, "Come on. We made money in the beginning. Now we're losing money. And we can't lose any more money, because we don't have any more money. Our kids have no more money to give the banks. Let's do something about it. Can we do something about it?"
Thank you, Mr. Sosa. Our next speaker, please. Sharice McDaniel. Next speaker, last call, Sharice McDaniel. Moving on to Alfred Rogers, Speaker 55, last call.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alfred Rogers. I'm a board member, Latino, Southwest. I want to share what a good education means, a honest budget. You can read the story that Gary Chico had in the Sun Times on May 38 of 2013. A little history note, you know, he was a candidate for mayor of City Chicago. He was also the first person in 1995, when he sat nightingale with Mayor Daley and Abbot Watson. And now he is the State Board of Education, Jesse. So what he says in that school is what I was saying before to my cousin over there, Rogers, the way they got my name is spelled in this number here. I'm with a D, R-O-D-G-E-R-S. I don't have any money. And you can see, so I want this to, why can't the mayor and this board go to the governor and put out their hand? Because we are a vendor. We have to get our money back to Chicago. I was saying it was a billion dollars that the state owed us. And I'll take the word, what's the difference between $8.60, $8.40, and a billion? Okay, I want the mayor to forget the casinos and stay on course for the children. I shared this information because when our taxes go up for education in Chicago and your property is in a TIF location, where does our money go? It goes to the slush account, or the other name that they apply to it, the TIF funds. So if you raise my taxes triple what they pay or anybody else, or the man that did it for a new school in the loop, you'd be paying the money, but it doesn't go to your library board, doesn't go to your...
Mr. Rogers, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Or CPS, or whatever. We've backed constantly, constantly. So our state have to give us back the money they owe Chicago. And really, we're here, it really struck me when I heard Kelly, $4 million off their budget. I was there. I couldn't believe it. I read a Brown's column in the Sun Times.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
$4 million is a lot of money for any school to lose. And that was the school that Mr. Gary Chico graduated from.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Our next speaker. Last call for Oyola Adinca. Moving on to Speaker 57, please, Nellie Cotton, followed by Speaker 58, Sean Barrett, then Speaker 59, Claudia Pizenti, and the last speaker, Lisa Pizenti. Last call for Nellie Cotton.
I'm Nellie Cotton. I'm a parent and LLC member from Grimes Fleming School. We lost $486,000 and four teaching positions, as well as a great number of auxiliary staff with the budget cuts. I have had children in CPS for over 20 years, and this was by far the longest, most horrific year ever. The longer unfunded school day, the teacher strike you forced to happen, the Common Core, the incessant high-stakes test used to punish our students, our teachers in our schools, the closing of our schools. We've weathered every conceivable assault from you, yet here we are, parents from all over this great and rich city, forged by adversity to stand strong in solidarity and our resolve for our children's education. We've been asked to suspend disbelief. Suspending disbelief is essential for a magic trick or circus act, that you are not expected to believe. Suspending disbelief is to indulge in fantasy. Asking us to suspend disbelief was a proper term, as one could not fathom that you actually expect us to believe that there are no funds for public education, yet there are funds for private university arenas to supplement charter schools and build new charters. Charter schools are not public schools. I know you do not expect us to believe that we are not being set up to fail by your actions or that this budget was not punishment for our teachers standing up for justice. You certainly do not expect us to believe that there is safe passage for our children in the communities you are sending them to, that stifling public education is not a push to privatize it. Do you expect us to believe that principal autonomy is not just your cowardice in facing consequences of the budget cuts and now principals having to choose between educators and essential supplies? You cannot afford, we cannot afford the luxury of fantasy. We believe in reality, and our children are educators in public education. We wholeheartedly believe in the need...
Ms. Cotton.
I heard.
Thank you.
For the elected representative school board, with educators and CPS parents at the helm, a real board accountable to its stakeholders, not the appointed puppet show what the trickery currently is. I believe that our school budgets are as useful as this one ply sheet of toilet paper.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton.
And the board needs to share this. And Barbara Bennetts, Berg Bennetts, you can suspend disbelief and...
Thank you, Ms. Cotton. Our next speaker, please, Sean Barrett. Last call for Sean Barrett. Last call for Claudia Pizenti. And last call for Lisa Pizenti. Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And, you know, before I invite my fellow board members to react to public comment today, let me just say, you know, we actually do appreciate folks who come in and give us opinions on the budget. I say that, you know, and we'll look into the facts behind most of those accusations to understand them. But we will do it, you know, in the context of a budget that we will ultimately approve. There is no budget that has been approved to this date, and it won't probably, most likely, get approved until August. And so this is a process, and this part of the process is valuable to us to understand it, what the impacts of proposals are, because at this stage, these are proposals. But I would say that these proposals are done in the context of what we have said, both this board and the management of CPS for a very long time, which is we have a significant financial problem. Nobody has tried to make any secret of that. People have argued about whether it's a billion dollars or less or more, but it is a big problem. We understand that it's a big problem. And I would also say that nobody that I know has said that cuts to meet our budget responsibilities wouldn't affect the classroom. What we have said is that we will try to minimize the impact on the classroom. There is probably no way, there's probably no way, that we can deal with a problem of that size without it having some impact on our schools. And so if anybody says that we have said it won't, they've misheard. And let me be clear, it has to. We can't have a problem that's 20% of our budget and not have it impact our schools. We're not that naive. We understand it. The idea is to try to minimize that impact. And as we go through this process, which will end up in a budget in August, I'm sure the management will make recommendations that will do the best to achieve that end. But nobody should be naive to think that it won't impact classrooms when all is said and done. So with that, I would welcome any other comments on what we've heard today from my fellow board members, if they'd so care to comment.
I would just like to say that, you know, it actually bothers me that people think that this is a pleasant task, to have to deal with seeing these cuts and hearing the cuts that are taking place. It is not one that I think any of us enjoy. It was something that had to be done to keep the schools open and at a level that they're open. And being a former principal and teacher, I understand what it is to have positions cut, not to have supplies. But I also, and it's not the first time, you know, it's been done throughout my 35 years, I had to struggle with those things. But some kind of way, the really great principals were able to continue and to carry on. I think also to think that when we're living in a time where economics affects everything, that it will not affect the Board of Education, and that when we had a strike and had to try to compensate teachers, not saying that they didn't deserve it, that that money had to be taken from somewhere else. You can't just find money. So this is a very difficult situation for all of us, and it just behooves me that people thinks it's only affecting them.
Anyone else? Jesse?
Interesting that Al, I don't know if you're still here, you mentioned, all right, the Sun Times piece that Gary went and talked to. The Sun-Times piece that Gary went and talked to, the Sun-Times editorial board was advocating that the legislature not cut education once again. And yes, Gary followed me into the seat at the State Board of Education. And I remember the first few years there when times were good, when we were increasing, and then the last few years when times were tough, when the General Assembly would kick the budget to us and say, "Figure out how to deal with this dwindling pile of money," because they didn't want it directly allocated themselves. So we've been in that spot, and it's unfortunate that that's one of the drivers here, that one of the big components of our funding is state funding. It's a way we fund education in this state. The other funding is property taxes, which is not a very equitable system. So we do, as Dr. Hines stated, we do feel it. I mean, I feel it when one of the associates I recruited to my firm calls me up and says, "My mother just got laid off from CPS." He's a colleague, he's a friend, it impacts me. I feel it when my brother-in-law comes over to the house on Saturday and says, "By the way, my niece says thanks. She just got laid off." I didn't even know she was a CPS teacher. So yes, those impact us. We hear that, and it's... I wish folks would sit here once in a while and just be in our shoes and realize we've got to make these difficult decisions. And, well, that's the other thing I can tell you from serving on the State Board of Education, that if you look at, speaking of which, if you look at East St. Louis, if you look at North Chicago, if you look at Calumet Park, if you look at all the other school districts that are under financial oversight panels across the state, there's not one utopian governance system across the state for school boards, across the country. So there are different models. You can disagree with them, but there are a lot of elected school boards that have failed their students miserably across the state and across this country. So that's something to be cognizant of as well. And then lastly, just one thing I've asked that we always address is that, I mean, frankly, there's a lot of misinformation that gets put out here. And we have office hours, and frankly, I appreciate the folks who come and talk to us one-on-one, because there's a lot more that gets done there. There's a lot more follow-up that happens, thanks to our wonderful staff, Abigail and Kara, somebody mentioned today, and so did Kara, following up with them. We do follow up. There is stability, there is transparency, there is advocacy, and that is a more conducive way than here, frankly. And it gets frustrating because you can't see that, you know, unless you come and take advantage of that time and work with us one-on-one to address some of these issues and barrel down into those numbers. You know, we realize these are impacting students. We realize they do hit the classroom, and so let's collectively work on those issues. But I mean, one thing, there are no national standards in terms of the Common Core. I was at the State Board when we adopted those standards. That was driven by the Council of Chief School Officers, educators across the country, Linda Darling-Hammond, others who are renowned education advocates and know, know that the Common Core will benefit students. It's not a frivolous expense. And Illinois was proud that I was on the State Board when Illinois was one of the first states to adopt them. And no, there are not 16 states that have not adopted. It's in the 40s who have adopted. There's a few states like Texas and Alaska who have not. But I'm glad that we're in Illinois where we had the foresight and the wisdom to go ahead and proceed on, thanks to Dr. Chris Cook at the State Board of Ed who led that effort. So I just always want to make sure that we're clear on facts here, because facts matter.